I'll call the November 1, 2022 Finance Committee meeting to order.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a consideration, a motion for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $271,508.55 payroll and liabilities for 10/21/22 in the amount of $485,234.11 for a total of $756,742.66.
Your Honor, I would make a second on that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion regarding that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Is there anything else the Finance Committee needs to bring forward?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the meeting adjourned at 6:46.
Thanks. Okay.
Come with, with props. I'm Chuck Rogers.
And I, I first came to Riverton in 1973, had the good fortune at that time to, to work with Mayor Guard's mother, and we opened Fremont Counseling Riverton Branch, you know, a long time ago. So, I want to discuss the, the intersection of Hill Street and Main, you know, so North Hill as you're coming out of the college, and if I could get somebody to pass these around. One's front and back, and then, and then the second one's an addendum. The, this is, it's a dangerous intersection. Some of the history is it's since at least 2000, I, I mean, I've got reports from the college of their attempts to, at different times, get a stoplight or something put in at that intersection. And, and at various times, the city has also been involved in that, but it hasn't happened. YDOT did a study from 2007 to 2012, and they compared the, the data from that intersection with data, with data from Main and College View. Now, I don't know if that was in preparation, I think it was a five-year study in preparation for putting in a stoplight. I'm not sure of that, but Main and Hill Street, there were 18 crashes compared to College View, College View, there were 16. On Hill Street, 14 people were injured as opposed to three people on College View and Hill and, and Main. So, I don't know, but if that data were used for a stoplight, you know, I, I don't know, you know, maybe it was in the wrong place. So, I collected data or got data from YDOT and from the Riverton Police Department. YDOT from 2007 to 2012, there was a two-year overlap there, and I used the YDOT data through 2012, and then the RPD data from 2012 up to 2022. And you can see the, over those 14 years, there were reported 37 crashes. Now, that, that, I don't quibble with that, that's probably correct. You, the two agencies collected data differently, so, you know, and I can, I can discuss reasons, you know, for my conclusions on some of the data anytime, you know, but not now. The, what are called injury crashes in the RPD data is 24, and that also includes injuries, injury crashes from the, from YDOT data. The number of people injured, now, I know that that is an absolute underestimate because I think RPD data only has the category, you know, accident with injury, without injury, with property damage, without property damage, but it doesn't indicate how many people might have gotten injured. And over the two years where the, the two sets of data overlap, there were eight more people indicated as being injured on the YDOT data than the RPD data, not, not that the RPD data is wrong, they're just using different categories. So, so I know that that's a, an underestimate, and there are no fatalities listed. However, Carolyn Whitman died in, in November of 2014 after an accident. I think on November 13, 2014, she died in Casper, a week later, and, and she had been like a 32-year employee and was an employee of the Riverton Police Department at the time she died. So, I, I know that that's an underestimate, you know, and I don't know, because it's listed as, that, that accident was listed as accident with injury, because I don't think there's a category for fatality. Okay. And in October 2012, after the, the five-year YDOT study, the Professor Robert Husa, who I see is here, spoke to the council, and at that same meeting in October, Chief Broadhead spoke to the council, and he, he said, quote, "That intersection is a fatality waiting to happen." So, two years later, it, it happened. There will be more fatalities. There are many, you know, there were many, many more people injured than, than it appears, including my wife, who broke three ribs, was transported to the hospital by ambulance, and was listed as, you know, accident with property damage, but no, no injury was listed. So, anyway, so why is the intersection so dangerous? And, and you can see the data that I have there, you know, prior, you know, for the 14-year period. Why is it so dangerous? When, okay, my wife, on, the, the night before her birthday, or the afternoon, before she, her 76th birthday, so it was April 18 of 2022, she was coming from the apartments west of the college on North Hill Street to cross the intersection. She hates that intersection. I mean, she, she visits a friend who lives in apartments there like three times a week, an elderly friend, and complains about that, that intersection, pardon me, each, each time. Now, in her, she started driving in Montana at age 15. She had never been in an accident, nothing, ever. And so, at age, one day from shy of 76, she's T-boned on that intersection. And this, this first picture, if you would, just, you know, is simply the result of that accident. And, and she, at this, at the accident scene, she was saying, "I didn't see it." You know, I, how come I couldn't, I didn't see anything coming? I mean, what, what's wrong? I mean, how come I didn't see it? And she, you know, she's a cautious driver. So, I started to investigate. I mean, why, why didn't she see it? You know, well, the, and if you would show these, these next, the, these next two pictures are, if, okay, the, the way the intersection is. Here's the college, and pardon my, here's, and here's where you, you come to turn left or to go straight. Okay, now, it doesn't show there, but there's, there's a little hill there, and I don't know if that's a factor at all. But, so I, I went there, and the, the second picture, I think, is what you see through the passenger window of your car. Okay, the front passenger window. And you only see up to a little bit beyond the sign that says it's, you know, Riverside Drive or River, Riverview Road is on the far side of the street. So, when you're looking that way, that's how far you see, a little bit beyond that, which I think is 30 to 40 yards. Okay, now, using a stopwatch and also math calculations and being conservative, from the time a, if a car is at the edge of your, of your, of your blind spot there to this window, from that time to when the car is in the center of the intersection, which is simply this, you know, that is 1.8 seconds. So, it goes from a blind spot to the middle of the intersection in less than two seconds if they're driving 45, which nobody does. Now, in fairness, if you look, She had never been in an accident, nothing, ever. And so at age, one day from shy of seventy-six, she's T-boned on that intersection. And this, this first picture, if you would, just, you know, is simply the result of that accident. And, and she, at this, at the accident scene, she was saying, "I didn't see it." You know, "I, I, how come I couldn't, I didn't see anything coming?" I mean, what, what's wrong? I mean, how come I didn't see it? And she, you know, she's a cautious driver. So I started to investigate. I mean, why, why didn't she see it? You know? Well, the, and if you would show these, these next, the, these next two pictures are, if, okay, the, the way the intersection is. Here's the college. And pardon my, but here's.
So you can be in the mic.
And here's where you, you come to turn left or to go straight. Okay? Now, it doesn't show there, but there's, there's a little hill there, and I don't know if that's a factor at all. But so I, I went there and the, the second picture, I think, is what you see through the passenger window of your car. Okay, the front passenger window. And you only see up to a little bit beyond the sign that says, uh, it's, you know, Riverside Drive or River, Riverview Road is on the far side of the street. So when you're looking that way, that's how far you see, a little bit beyond that, which I think is thirty to forty yards. Okay? Now, using a stopwatch and also math calculations and being conservative, from the time a, if a car is at the edge of your, of your, of your blind spot there to this window, from that time to when the car is in the center of the intersection, which is simply this, you know, that is one point eight seconds. So it goes from a blind spot to the middle of the intersection in less than two seconds if they're driving forty-five, which nobody does. Now, in fairness, if you look through the back window, the back passenger window, you, you can see up the highway. But I, I never do that. I, I, you know, I do now, believe me. But, or if you've got a stiff neck or something, you're not gonna, you don't think of doing it. Okay, so, if, if a car's in, you know, has just entered, like the third picture there, where it has just entered your view of vision, you have maybe a second and a half before that thing is in the middle of the intersection. I mean, you're, you know, you're, you're gonna be blindsided unless you look through the, through the back window. Okay? So, um, that brings us to, you know, possible things to do. And I know this, you got jurisdictional issues and YDOT and everything else. You know, ideally, I think there ought to be a, a stoplight or at least a flashing light. Okay? But that's not the end of the story. If you decrease the speed limit from forty-five to thirty-five, to thirty, forty-five to thirty, you go from a, a period of time, you know, from the blind spot to the middle of the intersection, you go from two seconds to three seconds. So you've, you've given yourself a little more of a fighting chance, you know, by, by reducing that. But even if you have a stoplight, if somebody runs that sucker, if they run a red light, you know, two seconds later, you, you could, you could still be dead. So I think you have to do something about the intersection. And what I was originally thinking was, you know, this would, maybe would be, you know, very expensive and you'd have to get, this, this is land on CWC. This is property of the LDS Church, I believe. I believe owns that. I, I don't know. But, you know, I was thinking, well, geez, to square up that intersection, you gotta move the whole, the whole intersection. You know, so you gotta do something with the land on one or both sides and, and square it up. Okay? Now, what I want to propose is, you know, first, I, I'd like, I'd like there to be a stoplight. And I think, you know, a lower speed limit would be good. Okay? But in addition to that, you gotta do something with that intersection. And I think a, a very reasonable, financially cheap way to do this is this. I, I don't, this, this, this is the way it's set up right now. If you're gonna turn left, you come up here and you, you know, you turn left. It's, it's between there and there, between there and there is, you know, you turn left. Or you go straight across to Hill Street. If you turn right, here's the way, here's the way that's painted right now. But also, you've got this curve here. And I was up there, you know, I've spent a lot of time in this intersection since my wife, my wife's accident, you know? And there was a, a van parked while they were gonna turn right, but the lady was texting. So I went up and, uh, turned parallel to that van. So I was, I was angled like this, right here. Here's what happens if you paint the, the lanes differently. If you don't do anything else but paint those lanes differently. Now, where you see there's a car way in the distance there, that car is two tenths of a mile away, not thirty or forty yards, two tenths of a mile. The, if the, if that car is going forty-five miles an hour, you've got sixteen seconds before it's in the middle of the intersection. You can still look to your left and see Main Street. So I think what I would love for you to consider, you know, is sending somebody out there, hopefully, you know, a highway engineer or somebody, but with a paintbrush, paint these, these lanes this way instead of, instead of that way. And I think you'd save a lot of injuries, possibly some deaths. Now, the only, you, you'd have to, I think, put in a curb here in order to herd traffic, you know, into that lane. Because otherwise, you know, people just drive straight. And I think you would need reflectors on both sides for at night so that you, you, you knew where that, that lane was. But I think that would all be, you know, a cheap fix, maybe a temporary fix, certainly a partial fix, but at least buy some time while you can study, you know, what, what else maybe can be done or if this can be done better. Now, if, if somebody with, with a lot more knowledge than I have in, in terms of highway stuff says, "Well, this, this intersection this way is not good when you're crossing, when you're crossing to South Hill Street." You know, "You're at too much of an angle." Well, that, that may be. So you don't have to make it quite that angle. You could make it half that angle and maybe only see one tenth of a mile up the road and give yourself eight seconds instead of sixteen. You know, but I, I think, you know, I think it's a doable thing. And so anyway, I, I appreciate your attention. Our Professor Husa is here. If, and I don't know if he wants to speak or not, we, we haven't wired anything together on this, but thank you very much. And my, my phone numbers are there. If, if there's any explanation on the data or what I, what I did and stuff like that, you know, I'd be glad to discuss it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Bob, could you come on up?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Robert Husa. I'm a retired professor from Central Wyoming College and I'm a Riverton businessman now. I happen to live two miles out of town. I have some fairly low-down neighbors. Mr. Butterfield is my next-door neighbor. Sorry, Kyle had to get you. I wanted to let you know a little bit about the discussion that I had some years ago with YDOT and what resistance I received when I asked questions about the intersection of Hill Street and West Maine. My former colleague Carolyn Honstedt was T-boned at that intersection. She was not injured seriously, but her car was totaled. One of my students' car was, cars, uh, car was totaled there, there at one point or another. I did an informal survey of the CWC staff. Eighty-five percent of the people who responded said that they had either seen an accident or been in an accident at the corner of, of Hill Street and Maine. Now, because we have an increased population on West Riverview, where Kyle and I live and the golf course and further expansion to the west side of Riverton, the, and the improvement of the, of Hill Street that was done by the city, that intersection is being used more heavily. And we are now going to have more heavy use of that intersection when the new CWC Equine Center is finished. Because that's one of the ways that people are gonna get in there. So I, I suggested a couple of things, that we reduce the speed limit on Main Street in front of the college. As you are well aware, the, the straight stretch between, between College View and the LDS ward is the Indianapolis Five Hundred when people are moving west. There are people that are driving seventy miles an hour through that intersection by the time they get out of there. RPD is not to blame for that. It's the stupidity of those drivers. People that are coming into town come past the YDOT gate at seventy miles an hour and get off the accelerator, but they're still going fifty-five when they get to the intersection of Hill Street and Maine. So I suggested that we would have a new speed limit of thirty-five between the West Main Maverick and all the way out to the airport. And Mr. Beers from the YDOT said, "That's impossible." And I said, "Why is it impossible?" It is certainly possible. Most small towns in Wyoming have a thirty or thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. Why can't we? Well, that's the first time people are slowing down since DuBois. To me, that argument made absolutely no sense. Could we put a sign on the blind side of that intersection that says, "Dangerous approaching dangerous intersection"? That was said, that, he said, "No, that can't be done." Could we put a sign on North Hill Street that said, "Approaching dangerous intersection? Look both ways three times." No, that can't be done. Can we put a light there? "Well, if you have three hundred thousand, we'll put it up." That's what he told me. So my question to the city council and also to YDOT is how many deaths do we have to have? Who is the next person that's gonna be trashed at that intersection? My wife? His kids? I hope not. So I would suggest a couple of things. A reduction in the speed limit of, on West Maine from the Maverick all the way to the airport at thirty-five miles per hour, that it is heavily enforced when it's changed. So that the police have a strong presence there and they write big tickets for those people who don't think they need to slow down. Though we have an automatic sign, as the, as Riverton has now, that rotates around that says, "You're going too fast. Slow down. Thirty-five." It doesn't cost a lot of money. If we can put a, um, a light there, it would solve a myriad of problems. If it's four forty-five, you can't get across Main Street from the college. If there is an event at the Arts Center or the Equine Center, you can't get across the street. I doubt seriously that the college, the LDS Church and the private entities on the other side are going to allow the land swap so that we can square off the intersection. But a stoplight would solve it. And as far as I can tell, it's the only remaining intersection in Riverton that is like that that does not have a light. Every other intersection does. So is it possible that the Fix Our Roads funds can be used to fix that? Because if they're fixing pavement, why can't they fix the safety of the drivers and the pedestrians at that intersection? That's my conclusion. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Susan. We're a little bit fortunate.
Go ahead. You have a question? You got one there. I just want to make sure you weren't moving through.
Tom Erhart again, eight oh seven Riverview, come to discuss about the traffic and the stop sign violators on Riverview and Monroe Avenue. They put up a flashing sign, that mobile one, and it did slow a few people down. And when they get to the sign, they romp on it to see how fast they can go past it, how much black smoke they can blow. And there's no sign going the other way, no traffic control going the other way, and they speed. There was, uh, two city cops up there the other day and I about had a heart attack because the people were driving the speed limit in both directions. And they was up on the canal bank trying to arrest somebody. And as far as I know, that sign or that speed zone sign there has never picked up a soul yet for speeding or stop sign violations. And I don't know how many times I'm gonna have to come to the council before somebody does something about it. But I guess I'll come every two weeks if I have to now. Thank you much.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
You have a comment?
Mike?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I do, I'm the representative on the force committee from the city council. And before we redid Hill Street, that is one of the things that we did talk about. And we did take that to YDOT and talked about realigning that intersection, possibly getting a light in. And again, from what YDOT told us, without throwing Robert under the bus, but what YDOT told us is that, that, that intersection did not have enough traffic to justify a light. I would agree that it's a funky intersection because of the alignment, because of the speed that they're going. So I think, I would hope that we will relook at that. And it is really YDOT's jurisdiction and their decision to make, but we can at least tell them we want them to look at it again. So.
Dr. Roger?
Very, very briefly, uh, you know, I also talked to YDOT and, you know, their algorithm that they use has said it didn't meet the data, the, the, the level, you know, for a light. But I think it's because of lack of traffic. But I want to propose, you know, that's, that's backward math. Because if, if that intersection was a little more, you, you had two more accidents during the study period at that intersection than you did at, on College View. And I'm sure College View had more traffic. So what I contend is that the intersection that has as many or more accidents and definitely more injuries, but less traffic is more dangerous. It's more dangerous each time you cross it than one with the same data but more traffic. So, you know, that, that algorithm is goofy, so thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can we move the median strip and the flashing light from the one outside the depot? We'll make a lot of people in this town happy, solve two problems with one.
Robert, Robert, could you help us?
Since Robert's here, I had to throw that in. We graduated together.
Robert, could you help us just a little bit with some information on that? We're fortunate tonight to have a pop guy from the...
I'd also like a crosswalk when I'm trying to get from one side to the other.
Thanks. I'm Robert Shidemel. I'm with YDOT. I'm a resident engineer, so.
So.
Questions?
Some, some questions that I have. Do we have jurisdiction on the speed limit there as a city council?
That's a question I can't answer. I'm a construction engineer, not a traffic engineer. That would be a question for Jack Hoffman.
Your Honor, we do not have jurisdiction for the speed limits on the state highway.
So what does it take to get jurisdiction on a state highway?
Your Honor, that's something that we would need to work with the district office and the traffic engineer.
Okay.
I'm thinking.
So, so it's just clear, right? I think I know the answer to the questions I've been asking. Ownership of that road is YDOT, correct?
Correct.
And we have seen... And um, we have seen recent designs. We'd like to rebuild the road from Sunset past the Equine Center and across going south to that intersection. And I have seen the drawings that, that actually bring that to a squared intersection, which makes it get up on the, to the east onto the college's property and allows it very much what Dr. Ro- Rogers is describing, is very much like the, the turn on it that we changed at Central Wyoming College where you, in the Circle Drive where you have to swing and, and look more west by, by pavement and, and paint, you look more west before you turn back to town.
Correct.
And so are those things that you would be responsible for or are those things that we would be responsible for?
So if you were just to repaint that street going to the north off of the highway there to the north, um, that would be up to you guys to repaint that street. We wouldn't repaint the highway, but for you guys to repaint the street, that's totally up to you guys.
And we could put delineators in our road, the, just not your road.
Correct.
And if no one was looking, we could pick up the island and move it to that location.
Uh, probably not, no. You know, and Kyle and myself, we've had numerous meetings on Hill Street regarding traffic signals. Um, I'm on the force committee also with Mike, and, you know, we're going to have at the force meeting, the next force meeting, if I'm not mistaken, our traffic engineer from the district is gonna be there to talk about Hill Street and to talk about the warrants that's not meted in that, that's not met in that intersection. I told Kyle before, YDOT, since it does not meet warrants, YDOT will not pay for a traffic signal. That doesn't mean the city can't put in a traffic signal, but we wouldn't maintain it. We wouldn't do any upgrades to it. We wouldn't do anything with it. When it did meet warrants, YDOT would take over the maintenance of that facility. But like Kyle said, I talked with Kyle, he goes, "We don't even have anybody that maintains traffic signals."
Your Honor.
How, how do you do that?
Kyle?
What um data, when you say it doesn't meet the criteria, how old is that data?
That data, I believe, Kyle, was that two thousand and eighteen that we did our last traffic study on that intersection? I'm not sure. Something like that.
So how do we change, how do we request a, a new um gathering of data through you or through our city?
Well, our, our traffic engineer's gonna be at the force committee meeting, and I'm pretty sure he's going to leave from that meeting, and he will probably wind up asking for another set of data ASAP. One thing we need to look at this, that this data reflects is, we want to take it during the busiest times. We don't want to take it in the summertime when the college is not doing anything. You'll want to take it during college, when the college is in full session, things are going on, whatever you want to call it. That way you pick up the true numbers of the people that are there. A lot of people say, "Well, let's get the numbers during tourist season." Well, how many of the tourists are actually turning into CWC? You know, yeah, it reflects a lot of numbers on the highway, but it doesn't reflect the two tru- true turning movements in Hill Street or in the uh coming from College View. So that's just my...
So if we, if we requested a, another traffic study, is that funded by the state or do we need to help fund that?
We do traffic studies. Um, our traffic program does traffic studies. We um do traffic counts on our highways every, every year. Certain highways, one year, certain highways the other year. I believe the cities are all counted every five years? If I'm not mistaken? I, something like that. But we go into the towns and we count Eighth Street, Sunset, all the, all the major intersections. We know how many cars are coming off that, but we only count them once every like four or five years.
So could the traffic data change where we started the forty-five reduction at the, at the bottom of Griffey and then move it down to the cement, the cemetery area, your office to thirty-five on into town? How do we, how do we request that?
You'd have to talk to the traffic engineer, Jack Hoffman, out of Basin.
Okay. Um, I think those are all real legitimate questions and, and asks that we, that we could, and, and even three hundred thousand dollars for a traffic signal seems expensive, but probably very helpful as if, if you're in the wreck, I think you would appreciate the thought.
I do know, talking with Kyle and talking with our traffic folks, if you guys were to put a traffic signal in there and YDOT was to take over maintenance of that, YDOT would really would like you guys first to look at realigning that intersection.
Yeah.
That would be getting property from Central Wyoming College and squaring up that.
That would be...
So that future maintenance of that intersection would be a lot more plausible and easier because in the future, if that, if Sunset does tie in all the way back there and numbers increase and that road going north off of Hill Street there, you might be looking at additional property to widen the road to, to accommodate for the traffic.
Yeah.
Flying right away. Then what do you do? Do you leave the same alignment? I wouldn't think you would. You'd want to change the whole traffic signal system and everything else, and it's just more expensive. It's best to do it right off the bat.
And so I think the other thing that's been mentioned is why can't we use the one cent dollars to do that? The verbiage in one cent deals with, with asphalt and utilities under the road. Is that not correct, Kyle? And so you would have a large, you would have a possibility of, of people complaining of that that a light was not in that spectrum of vote that we voted for.
You know, the one thing we gotta remember though also is I don't disagree with the gentleman that was up here earlier saying that that realignment on that north end, it's possibility for the force committee to use the money to realign that section. You don't even need to buy a, buy the traffic signal. It's gonna be costly, most definitely, because right away and everything else is very expensive, but you can still realign it and get that squared up so that you're not looking through the back rear window of your car to see oncoming vehicles.
So tell us something about just a red flashing light. Lots of towns you, you come across a first intersection that is lit with, and it's in the air, it's up above traffic. Is that a possibility? It should be a lot cheaper.
It is. Um, we wouldn't put, we would put a yellow flashing light. I don't... I don't know how that would work. That's something that the traffic engineer would have to talk about and everything else. It wouldn't change the dynamics of the stop sign at all. We wouldn't put a red flashing light on the highways portion of it. It would just be on the side streets.
Okay. Because I probably failed one-on-one driver's test of flashing red light. You're supposed to stop before you proceed, correct?
Correct.
So if it's a, a yellow light, it's just slow down and proceed with caution?
Correct. The yellow light, you know, we could put that over the highway possibly. I don't even know if the traffic, traffic engineer would allow that. I'm not sure.
Couldn't we put some signage down the road that alerts people of a dangerous intersection?
Probably not. That, we've never made a sign like that. I'm not saying that, you know, we couldn't. I mean, I've driven from Farson to Kimmer and seen some of those funky wildlife signs, so you never know what could be done, but, you know, um, the uh, it's just up to the traffic engineer. We...
And everything on, on the highway is under your control, and we have everything to the side street.
Correct.
Okay. Appreciate calling you right out of the audience when you're not prepared for, for that.
I have one more question. Can that island be moved up a block so it's not where the depot comes out?
If they want to move, if they want to move the crosswalk in the path, that's, that's an option.
Well, it would be a better option if it was up a block because you don't have that funky turn coming out of the depot.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but that, that, you know, I'll...
I mean, seriously, up one would be...
When we were, when I was driving down there, I was coming up Main Street, and I'm in my state truck, and an older gentleman was walking across, and he had a cane. And I'm like, "Okay, great." And in my side view mirror, I am looking back, and there is a diesel pickup pouring on the black smoke coming up Main Street, and I'm thinking, "Oh, no. He can't see this older gentleman that's right in front of my truck." And I'm thinking real quick, timing wise, "I'm not gonna witness something real nice here." Do I honk and scare this man to death or... So I honked, and he almost hit my truck with his cane, and that truck just went, "Fuh!" Right past me. And he goes, "Thank you." I said, "No problem." I see that a lot down there, and that's why that island went in, and that's why everything went in that way. So just so I let you know. Because the people on the outside will stop, but the people on the inside, they don't. So.
Thanks, Robert.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two executive session. Approval of the minutes November first, two thousand twenty-two finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Are there any other items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, the finance committee met prior to this meeting and recommended the city council consider claims in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and eight dollars and fifty-five cents payroll and liabilities for ten twenty-one of twenty-two in the amount of four hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eleven cents for a total of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-six cents.
Thank you. The chair would entertain, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilwoman Larson has the second. Council discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing in consideration of, of retail liquor license transfer of ownership and location. Ichiban Japanese Steakhouse, city clerks report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and council before you tonight for your consideration is a retail liquor license transfer of ownership and transfer of location application submitted by Ichiban Japanese Steakhouse Three Incorporated located at three oh three South Federal Boulevard for the remainder of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three liquor licensing term. The license is currently operated by Predator Productions, Inc., doing business as Baked On Broadway, housed at one sixteen South Broadway Avenue, Suite D. Representatives from both Ichiban Japanese Steakhouse and Predator Productions are in the audience tonight if you have any questions about the transfer application. The Wyoming Liquor Division has certified the application as complete. The proper fees have been paid and proper notice to the public has been advertised. Therefore, based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends approval of the transfer.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing in consideration of a transfer of ownership and transfer of location of retail liquor license for Ichiban Japanese Steakhouse Three INC. for the remainder of four one twenty-two through three thirty-one twenty-three liquor license term.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Salisbury has a motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The public hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Seeing that, Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilman Larson has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the transfer of ownership and transfer of location of the retail liquor license for Ichiban Japanese Steakhouse Three INC. for the remainder of four one twenty-two to three thirty-one twenty-three liquor license period.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Kyle?
Our Ichiban is, is a restaurant, isn't it? So why do we have a retail liquor? Why don't we have a...
Restaurant?
Yeah, restaurant.
Kristen, can you help us?
Yes, Your Honor. There are different um things that you can do with a retail license that you can't do with a restaurant, and one of those is catering. Um, you cannot cater uh an event at your bar without a retail license.
Okay.
And we have several restaurants in town. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but several restaurants in town that do have a retail license.
So it's a more, more robust license?
Correct.
Okay.
So they'll be able to cater offsite?
Correct.
So good to answer.
Thank you. Yes.
Any, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of Public Defender's Service Contract, City Administrative Report, please.
Thank you, Honor. As you're aware, the city of Riverton operates a municipal court, and as part of its functions, it is required to provide for a public defender. Um, the position provides a court-appointed legal representation for criminal defendants for bail hearings, arraignments, and trials. Ms. Jane Juve has served as the public defender since January twenty nineteen. However, she has had another professional opportunity and has tendered her resignation. Pursuant to your Riverton Municipal Code, this appointment is one that the mayor has authority to appoint with the consent of the city council. A request for qualification was advertised, um, and we were fortunate to receive three submittals of qualification and resumes. They were from Bailey Lasari, Janet Millard, and James Whitey. Um, each of the submitting attorneys are in good standing with the Wyoming Bar Association, have public defender experience, and meet the requirements of the request for qualification. And Mayor Guard, it's uh, is your prerogative and privilege to appoint um the public defender position to replace Ms. Jane Juve.
Thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Janet Millard as the public defender and direct staff to execute a contract for service. She was, um, Janet was wanting to be here tonight, but she was picking up a friend from the hospital in Casper, I believe. Kyle and I did get the opportunity to uh talk with her Monday, and she seems highly qualified and, and ready to do the work. Any questions about Janet? So I need a motion.
Your Honor, I would make a motion that we hire um...
Janet Millard?
Janet Millard.
Janet Millard for uh the position advertised.
Public defender?
Public defender.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Larson has the motion. Council, Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Planning Commission Parking Qualification Calculations Presentation, Community Development Director's Report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, counsel. City council requested the planning commission conduct research to provide insight into parking calculations with Riverton Municipal Code as it pertains to R four residential parking calculations per living unit. Specifically, the council questioned whether the numbers used to calculate limits were valid and applicable to current needs and standards. The parking committee was established for members of the planning commission to disco, to explore the above referenced question. The committee met multiple times to review the needs of the city of Riverton and its current ordinances. The committee also explored several ordinances from other municipalities and met with community stakeholders to discuss parking needs. The parking committee prepared a presentation... The parking committee prepared a presentation for the planning commission reflecting its research and discussion. The presentation specifically addressed the R four parking standards and how suitable they are for Riverton and how they compare with other municipalities and neighboring communities. This presentation will be provided to city council here in a moment from representatives from the parking committee itself. There are no current budget impacts for the parking committee's presentation, and it's a recommendation that we accept the findings that come out.
Thank you.
Come on up, Robert.
That's why I came in.
Just so happens that he was here for some reason. While he's getting that set up, I'd like to, the planning commission did put together a parking committee. This topic is one of the very specific topics that we were tasked from council when we discussed our four regulations to validate what these numbers are, and this is exactly what Robert's going to present. There's a couple other troubling topics in the city with parking that that committee is working on right now that there will be further information coming from that group, but this is just the very first.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Not if I know how to play it at all. I built it, but I've never played a slideshow, so I don't know.
Nope.
Don't print it.
We're up, and I'll get you going.
Okay, you do that for me.
I think I will. Can't see anything on there.
If you run slideshow on the top.
That hidden button down there. Okay, wouldn't have known that. I've got two additional copies, so I'm just going to give these to the city.
We'll find somebody that can read them to us.
So, as Mike stated, we were to look at the R four parking for multi-family housing. Committee was chosen, basically, and we met every other week, discussed it. We talked with Kyle Butterfield and the chief of police and some of the other topics that the committee talked about was trailer parking in residential areas and basically off-street parking guidelines and on-street parking, the on-street parking ordinances and stuff like that. We're just going to go through the whole packet. But this one thing is just about the R four, and that's it. So what I did was I kind of robbed from Peter to pay Paul. I used Bethany's first presentation she used for the one-acre lot. I expanded a little bit on it. So using our minimum parking requirements, multi-family, one per studio, one point five per one-bedroom, two parking spots per two-bedroom, two point five for three-bedroom, and on and so forth. I built a little makeshift apartment complex. I put four one-thousand-square-foot apartments and three stories high. So there's going to be actually twelve apartments on that little four on there. Then I built four twelve-hundred-square-foot apartments that are two-bedroom, and I made that two stories high just to see what would fly here. So using our current residential parking, as you can see, the multi-family, I said it before, using our, just the numbers that we were given, plus parking dimensions that's in the code and everything else or in the I can't remember if it's not code, it's guidelines.
Yeah, it's a parking guideline resolution.
Yep. So, and we evaluated the numbers per domestic unit to other towns and cities for the evaluation. We used a twenty-unit apartment, eight two-bedrooms, twelve one-bedroom units. We evaluated Cody, Salt Lake City, I know that's a little bit bigger, but Douglas, Powell, where the other municipalities evaluated. One of the things we found proper parking can prevent potential traffic issues. All cars have a space, prevents overbuilding of the lot size and prevents on-street parking spillover and congestion. So this is Riverton versus Powell. And you can see on the far left, you can't really see it very well. But at the very bottom, one and two family dwellings is two spaces per dwelling unit. And at the very bottom, number three, it says multi-family dwellings, two spaces per dwelling unit. Using Riverton's, same as we had before. And Douglas, Douglas was basically two spaces per unit for anything, multi-family, travel, trailer, mobile home. And a garage may be counted for one required space. So basically, you get two spaces for any domestic unit, whether it has one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, whatever it is. Salt Lake City, two parking spaces for each dwelling unit containing two or more bedrooms, one parking space for one-bedroom and efficiency dwelling, a half a parking space for a single-room occupancy dwelling, six hundred feet maximum. And number four, I really didn't know what number four was. So. Under Cody, Cody's multi-family dwelling, it is one point four spaces per one-bedroom, two spaces per two-bedroom, two point two-five spaces per three-bedroom unit. So with all the different codes from the different communities and everything else, I evaluated and did little spreadsheets. I can understand spreadsheets. So under Riverton, putting in all the numbers, for our code, for our guidelines, we would require thirty-eight parking spaces for that apartment structure that I came up with. Under Powell, they would require forty. Next on down is Riverton and Douglas. Same thing, ours is thirty-eight still. Douglas is forty. We go to Salt Lake City and Riverton, and Riverton still stays at thirty-eight, and Salt Lake City comes to thirty-six. Then we do Riverton and Cody. Riverton is thirty-eight, and Cody is forty-one. What I did for the evaluation, I did forty parking units. And looking at the apartment complex that I kind of made up, we come up with forty parking units, and these are ninety degrees. I followed the same guidelines that's in our guidelines. Made those spaces and everything exactly the same. This is the scale. So you can see with this that our numbers align very well with other communities. It's, we're thirty-eight, they got forty, Salt Lake had thirty-six. But our numbers are very current. We're not expecting too few, not expecting too, you know, too many. So with that conclusion, city Riverton R four parking calculations are up to date and correlate with other communities. These parking calculations prevent overbuilding of apartments and prevent spillover to on-street parking and street parking congestion. Stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? See any? Looks like you did a good job.
Awesome.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate your hard work.
Shut it.
I'm next.
Oh, I'll leave it up.
You do have some committee members with you. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to add? You're hired. Thank you. TV audience needs to hear your name.
Josephine Gilpatrick. The question that was asked was, one, was that table generated? And Michael told us that table was generated in two thousand eighteen. So it was just reviewed not too long ago and was updated not too long ago, so just thought I would add that.
Thank you. Public Works Year End Construction Report. Interim Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I can approach the podium?
Please.
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. This report is current with the exception of Sunset Park. We didn't add Sunset Park, but I believe everybody's fairly familiar with that project. So we'll just move on with more major construction and some of the updates in our water and sewer plants as well. Projects we'll be discussing tonight are the Cowboy Lane Water Line Project, Sunset Drive Improvement Project. And as I said, wastewater treatment plant upgrades, water distribution system upgrades specifically around the fairgrounds water line and a pressure reduction valve replacement up on Sunset. We've also thrown in the tap grant for the North Federal Lighting Project that was completed this year as well. And we'll start with the Cowboy Lane Water Line Project. It was originally designed in two thousand twelve and updated again in two thousand twenty-one. At that time, our engineer's estimate was seven hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars to complete this project. We advertised and had seven bidders. The lowest bidder was Viper Underground at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. We had five hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this project. It was awarded on February third, two thousand twenty-two. Of course, the public meeting was held on March third, two thousand twenty-two, and began work on March tenth of two thousand twenty-two. Seventy-five days to complete the project. It was substantially completed on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Second phase of the project, which has not been completed yet, we're waiting on easements. But as of this date, six residences in that area have hooked onto city water, including four taps that weren't included in the original ten taps. Just some photographs of the project itself. It's about four thousand linear feet of eight-inch water line from the start of that project to where it was concluded on Cowboy Lane and Cooper Road. Fairly easy project to do. There wasn't a lot of obstructions in the way, so they made timely work of it. Also included additional fire protection in the area. Water taps, meters, meter pits. It was a very good project, went off relatively easily compared to the next project. We talk about Sunset Drive Improvement Project. It's everybody's favorite. It went from North Federal to just Valley Circle, the side of Valley Circle. Designed by W H S and Lander. They were a consultant chosen from five other applicants. That occurred on February third, two thousand twenty-one. The project was to replace or renew installation of approximately five hundred and seventy-two feet of PVC water line, nineteen hundred feet of PVC sanitary sewer pipe, seven hundred and ten feet storm line, and eighteen hundred and forty-four feet of twenty-four-inch irrigation line was located beneath Sunset. Project kickoff was held on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The bids for that project were opened on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two with three bidders. The engineer's estimate when the project was designed was two million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Of course, with all the increases in fuel prices and everything else, the actual bid was ordered, seventy-one construction for two million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. They had a notice to proceed on May second, had a hundred and eighty days to complete the project. There were an additional thirty-five days added because of weather and construction delays. They had two change orders in that project totaling fifty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. And fifty thousand of that, as you're aware, was moving the relocation of the irrigation line to clear some obstructions in that North Broadway and Sunset intersection. At this point, they're finalizing some landscape restoration and concrete work. They finished pouring today, so. That was, one of the first delays was weather delay. Nice spring storm, probably the last one we got. And this is just some of the installation of water line, manholes, sanitary sewer. Then we get to North Broadway and Sunset. This is the fiber optic obstructions that were in the way, right in the path of the storm sewer and irrigation lines. In the picture on the right, it's kind of hard to tell, but the green line in the center is a gas line that had to also be relocated. They just angled it from its original location, ran it under where the construction was going to be, and then tied in on the other side. That was the main line. Some help from Poly Construction, they're a subcontractor for Century Link. They helped us raise some of the infrastructure out of the way so lines could be run underneath. And some of their fiber bank on the left side of the photo, some of it ran under the pipe, some of it over the pipe. But that was, that was where a lot of time got ate up. This was the other change order in the project. This is a manhole off of North Federal. Y Dot cambered it for us and found this manhole. It wasn't exposed at the surface, it's set two feet below the surface. Nobody knew it was there. So in order to accommodate that, we had to dig that out and raise that manhole up. That is complete now.
Two feet.
Yeah, it was two feet.
How old, do you have an idea how old that box was?
I don't. I don't know if Kyle does or not.
Your Honor, we don't have an idea on that, but we do know that it had its ties back to when the railroad was going through. A lot of this is related to irrigation infrastructure. We know the irrigation was there first, the railroad line came through later, and so there was a covert there to support the irrigation infrastructure as it went underneath the old railroad. So we can kind of subtract back to when the railroad was there and estimate.
Have to look at the casting of the sewer cover.
It was in still pretty good shape. Moving on to the wastewater treatment plant, we have three projects. And FY twenty-two, it led to five hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars in spending. Aside, six other projects were budgeted for this year and are currently underway at the wastewater treatment plant. One of those projects is Oxidation Ditch Aider Drive. Budgeted eighty thousand for that, it came in just slightly under. Return activated slush pump and motor control center upgrade. Budgeted a hundred and sixty-five thousand for that, the actual was, again, slightly under. And just recently awarded were the makeup air unit replacement in the de-watering building. Hundred thousand was budgeted for that, and the actual was seventy-nine thousand, one sixty-one. They also rebuilt a centrifuge scroll. That was a two hundred thousand dollar budget. That was a $200,000 budget project, and it actually came in under as well, $180,000.
These are all engineered in-house?
Yes.
Good estimates. Good job.
This is kind of a carryover project from last year. It was a manhole that needed to be rebuilt down at Smith Road and Monroe. It was a brick originally manufactured out of brick, stacking brick around it. It was starting to deteriorate pretty badly, so. Went to bid on the project, came in at $95,750. That was pretty expensive for what we were trying to do, so we later accepted some quotes to rehabilitate the existing manhole and awarded that to HK Solutions for $24,000.
Fantastic job there. Good job.
Water distribution system upgrades, the fairgrounds water line. That became an issue when the fairgrounds decided to tear out all their old asphalt and repave all the parking areas down there. Really needed to replace all of that 400 linear feet. Originally, we got quotes from the contractors to start with replacing 200 linear feet. Once we accepted the quote, the contractor, and after we looked at some of the line, he said he could complete the additional 200 feet for 20% of his original price. So we went ahead and did the entire project, 400 total feet was replaced. New parking lot was placed over the water line. We got new fire hydrant. We went with larger diameter. It was a four-inch cast pipe that was in there. We went back in with six-inch, and were able to add an additional fire hydrant in there for fire protection, which was seriously lacking. And that was paid for out of the operations budget and collections and distribution. This is just a couple of the photos. You can see up on the ditch bank, the old cast line. In that 400 feet, they counted 16 bands of where the line had previously been repaired over time. So the last three years, we've had a break there every year, so we just assume that we'll have new asphalt on top of a water break this winter sometime, so. They hadn't got it replaced. Sunset pressure reducing valve. It'd been in service since 1960. In 2020, it failed, causing uncontrolled filling of the Main Street water tank. Crews at the water treatment plant received the ERV and replaced, received quotes for $18,633, and for installation was $4,555. This is that chamber where that valve is located. Fairly easy project. Weren't anything, I was waiting on materials. And this is our North Federal Tap Grant Street Lighting Project. These, surprisingly enough, were the only two photos we had of that project. Lundy has over 1,900 photos on Sunset, but we only have two on this, so. At any rate, I think it speaks for itself. It really brightened up that north end of town, and it looks really good, so. Any questions? I run through it pretty fast. Didn't want to tie your time.
Looks good. I looked at, I had complained earlier in the week of how much the obstructions were on Sunset and had a conversation with the contractor, and today, all but a few were gone, and so it looks pretty great.
Yeah, it was a mess on, actually, Sunday. Our construction manager got a report. All the candlesticks were scattered all over the place up there. So he gave him permission on Sunday to go ahead and remove the bulk of the traffic control up there.
Super. Looks great. Good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Your Honor. Did we ever get resolution on the fiber optics on the corner of Broadway and Sunset?
Your Honor, Councilman, Mr. Rick Sowers is currently pursuing that, and we don't have resolution yet. We're hoping to resolve that informally before filing suit, but he has received your direction to file suit if we can't resolve this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
We're down to the quarterly fiscal health report. Financial Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. Our fiscal year ending June 2023 budget, the adopted final fiscal year budget was $30,403,000 and some change. The city budget is comprised of 12 funds, including general fund, enterprise funds, and fiduciary funds. There are 31 divisions within the city government, of which we track finances for. Our overall capital expenditures this year was $13,564,000, which 49% of that figure is offset by grant revenues. The general fund makes up approximately 29% of this year's total budget. It's a little bit less than what it was for last year's budget. It is the largest budget within the city, and it's the primary operating fund of the city activities. It's used, excuse me, and it's used for the revenues and expenditures of most tax-supported activities of the city. Departments within the fund include the Police Department, Streets and Alley's, Parks, Municipal Court, Community Development, and other departments. The largest source of revenue for our general fund is sales and use tax, mineral royalties, severance tax, and fuel tax. The city also receives direct distribution funding from over-the-cap mineral royalties, and these funds have been primarily used for one-time purchases to support capital projects. In recent years, they've also been budgeted to offset operational costs. At the close of the first quarter, the general fund reflected a negative balance of $418,607. Don't panic. Much of this is attributed to the completion of large capital projects, so a lot of the things that Brian just reviewed for you, with you, are attributed to the cost that we're looking at in this year's budget. The first one being the North Federal Decorative Lighting Project. It is a YDOT-sponsored grant with an 80/20 match. The project costs for that were $561,000, and the city will be requesting the grant reimbursement in second quarter for funding. We were waiting for final invoices for publications before we could submit that. The second large project was the Sunset Park Plankton Improvement Project with $75,000 spent on that. I think we've received $75,000 worth of compliments from the community on that project. It's been a well-done project. Additionally, the staff pays many annual expenses in July, which include like insurance and software maintenance expenses, things like that, where we front-load those costs at the beginning of the year. Last year, this fund closed with a balance of $152,351. And as a reminder, the budget was approved to transfer $818,000 from cash for operations this year. So while we're sitting at $400,000 in the hole, that's the North Federal Lighting Project in itself. Once we get that money back in, we'll be in good shape. Moving on to the Airport Fund. The total budget for the Airport Fund is just slightly in excess of $6.8 million, with 6.2 of that being capital projects. The Airport Fund closed the quarter balance, quarter with a balance of $194,000 in revenues over expenditures. This is primarily due to an unbudgeted sale of property at the airport industrial park and a $75,000 grant reimbursement from the Airport CARES Act grant. The approved airport budget did include a transfer of cash of $237,000 to support operations, and during this past year, the fund closed at $91,845. The last couple of years, we've been blessed with ARPA revenue, CARES Act money, and CRISA money to help support our operations for the airport. We have one more grant reimbursement left to request, $63,000, and that will exhaust all of our ARPA funding, so, and we'll have to watch how our airport operation moves through the remaining years. The annual budget for the Water Fund is $3.1 million. This fund reflects a 10% decrease from last year. There are $344,000 in capital projects proposed for the year. The fund closed the quarter with a $195,000 balance in revenues over expenditures. Staff anticipates that this number will reduce as citizens move into the fall and winter months and we move out of watering season. The budget was approved with a transfer of $319,000 from our cash to cover capital projects. We've limited capital purchases this year in the Water Fund. The largest budget expense will be the completion of the Cowboy Lane Quiver Lane Alternative Water Project and improvements to the bulk fill station and improvements to the carbon feed system at the water treatment plant. Last year, during the same period, the quarter closed with a deficit balance of $10,535. So we've made some strides in this fund. However, we have a large amount of capital improvements that we need to continue to do in the Water Fund in upcoming years. The annual budget for the Wastewater Fund is $3.1 million. This fund reflects a 13% increase over prior year, and as Brian presented in his capital projects or his construction projects, there's a lot of good activity going on at the wastewater plant. This is largely due to a $965,000 budgeted capital project and purchase line item in the wastewater fund, which is a 32% increase over last year. Some of the major capital projects and purchases budgeted include the Mesquite Sage Drive Sewer replacement and continued improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. The fund closed the quarter with $14,735 in our revenues over expenditures, and the budget was approved with a transfer of $694,000 to cover capital projects. So right now, we're a far cry from $694,000. Hope to keep it that way. Last year, during the same period, the quarter closed with a balance of $98,411 in revenues exceeding expenditures. Moving on to the Sanitation Fund. The annual budget for the Sanitation Fund is just slightly in excess of $3 million, and the fund reflects a 9.8% increase from last year. There are $649,913 in capital projects proposed for this year. Major plan purchases include a new sanitation truck, a compost screener, and a recycle truck. The fund closed the quarter with $54,511 in revenues over expenditures, and the budget was approved with a transfer of $675,000 to cover operational and capital costs. Last year, during the same period, the quarter closed with a balance of $91,845 of revenues exceeding expenditures. And then the final fund that I'll report on tonight is the Air Service Fund. The Air Service Fund is primarily funded by economic development tax, that half-percent tax. At the close of the quarter, the budget reflects a balance of $141,000 in revenues over expenditures, and the staff has not received any invoices from YDOT for the first quarter for air service billing, although I don't anticipate that it's going to be terribly large. Last year's closing balance was $72,884. And I stand for any questions that anyone would have.
It's a great report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're still probably the one that we're the furthest back in his water, correct?
Yes. Our Water Fund is showing improvement, but like I mentioned, we have a large number of capital projects, and I'm sure you've read in the paper and the news recently that we were awarded the $2.9 million ARPA Water and Sewer Grant, and the city will be obligated to a match for that out of both the water and sewer account, which we have. But we want to keep an eye on that. We still have other additional projects that need to be done to improve our infrastructure in the water system.
Anybody else have any questions? Thanks, Mia. Good job.
Thanks.
Maybe we should take a five-to-10-minute break, and we'll be back to close. That work for everybody? Let's reconvene. We're down to council committee reports and members' roundtable. Carla, could you start us off?
Certainly, Your Honor. I did have an opportunity to attend a PAWS committee meeting, and right now, they're in full swing on planning craft fairs. They're going to be there selling goodies for your pets, magnets, dog dishes, cat dishes, that sort of thing. So that's kind of exciting. And then I was just looking through the community activities. The one that's coming up soonest is November 5th. It's Coats for Folks. It's down at the fairgrounds from 9:00 to 11:00. They round up coats and all at different businesses around town, and people can go and get a new coat, and, well, it's new to them, and stay warm.
That's sponsored by the Kiwanis?
Yes, it is.
Is that right?
The other interesting thing I see here that sounds really fun is the Friday Night Cruise on Veterans Day. You're supposed to decorate your vehicle, be at Sutherland's at 5:30, and the rollout at 6:00 p.m. Numerous craft fairs starting up, so just go to goriverton.com, I believe it is, and you can find more information. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Your Honor. All right, Bill. Again, the only meeting I had since the last time we met was for the Riverton Airport Board. We met up at the airport and went over some of the new equipment that TSA is going to be putting in, and a little bit of a realignment of how the waiting area and the security areas and stuff are going to be configured. And again, last time we had a meeting, I, you know, I had traveled two or three times during that period, and I really want to compliment our airport staff and the TSA folks and all that. They do a wonderful job up there. You know, it's really a pretty quick and pleasant experience to get into our airport and out and going where we're going, you know, compared to going to the big city where you fight the lines and, you know, the grumpy TSA policemen and all that kind of stuff, where, you know, our folks are always very pleasant and joking and, you know, they're all, you can tell they enjoy their jobs, and it makes it a really pleasant experience. And of course, our airline numbers, we surpassed our 10,000 mark for the year early in October, and so that's, gives us a little additional funding for our projects. Again, we did approve an airport taxiway project, obviously come in a little over what we expected, but everything in the world now is over what we expect, and we just hope that company can get in here and do a good job for us and get after it as soon as the, you know, the frost is out of the ground next year, and.
That's a $7 million project.
Yeah. And.
Bigger than most.
So, yeah, that's a lot of asphalt and work and all that kind of stuff. And then again, last night was Halloween, and it was just very enjoyable to see the amount of kids and people that were out, and, you know, lots of trick-or-treaters and different activities going on, and it was a great night in Riverton, so.
Thanks, Mike. Kyle?
The only event that I had last night was 600 people at my front door and two dogs that got put into the kennels early. The nice thing about it was that there were parents accompanying there. The nice thing about it was that, that there were parents accompanying their young children as they trick-or-treated, and they were driving accordingly. Uh, the speed limit there is anywhere from forty to eighty miles an hour because there's no stop sign between Redwood and Sunset. But during that period of time, they were driving very slow and accommodating, and, and I'd say, we don't know how lucky we are to live in a smaller town. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Kristen?
Um, I haven't attended any meetings, but the last chamber meeting, I forgot to report that we had, um, some staff members that, from the Wind River Casino that were interested in maybe becoming members of the chamber. And one of the projects that they were interested in was putting some sort of signage out where Google Map has you turn before you get into Riverton and the casino, and they had funding to maybe do that, so... Linda Cowboy and Patricia, used to be goggles, I don't know what her name is now, they were old students of mine many years ago, but it's kind of exciting. And, um, during that meeting, they talked about, um, just having more interest in promoting Riverton because that promotes the casino and the reservation and the community as a whole, so it was pretty exciting. And the chamber said we welcome anyone who's interested in our communities and the businesses because it makes us all stronger. And the other thing, I was supposed to bring signs, I went and got them and I left them in my office, but this Saturday from five to seven, the Quick Draw Arts in Action kind of event will be held at the college from five to seven. We have the chamber, the college, the city all working together to do that. There will be hors d'oeuvres served from our local businesses, there'll be a cash bar, and the, um, gallery's already filling up with the artwork from our local artists, so they will be doing, um, the finishing Quick Draw event, silent auctions on what they're finishing, and then they also have other things for people to purchase for the holidays, and there's some really nice stuff up there. I think we're gonna have more interest than our artists can put out for their work, so it's really, it was great last year, and I hope a lot of people attend that, so...
Thank you. Kyle, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a few items. Um, the WAM Winter Workshop is coming up, and if any of you would like to attend that, um, please let me know. It's January twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. And, uh, Ms. Watson's also gonna help circulate, um, um, the ballot for representation on that, too, that's coming up. While we're on the subject of WAM, um, the Summer Workshop is in Cody, and WAM has communicated that while we're several months away from that, we may want to coordinate getting rooms. So if that's also an event you'd like to participate in, uh, we might want to get moving on that so that we're safe in having rooms in Cody during the summer. I do want to express my appreciation to staff and, and Tish in particular for what she put on for our trunk-or-treat yesterday. Um, as it's been communicated, it was nice to see the community get together and come out, and very nice to see the support we had at City Hall, so thank you, Tish, for your hard work on that. We are thankful to have Mr. Rogers come today and talk about the intersection. Um, just a few other points to round out some of the conversation. Um, I have had the opportunity to meet with President Tindell at CWC about the opportunity to potentially realign that intersection and the approach. And then as Robert Shadowman has communicated, um, we have been working with the traffic engineer on that location as well, and we hope to see some things moving forward, and even his proposal to re-stripe the lanes is something we will look at. Um, as we've sat in this meeting, I've, I've prepared just a quick draft of what that might look like. One thing we'll have to be cautious of is, as we square that up to address the perpendicular nature of, uh, entering the intersection, is that if we change that striping, it will shoot you directly towards the house that's on the west side of the intersection instead of the actual roadway as you head south. And so it, it may help this situation, but it may also create a more dangerous situation as you're then meandering and angling back through the intersection across the lanes. We will look at it. One thing we can, we could do is shift those lanes a little bit to the east, but, uh, I'm getting nerdy and technical here, but if we do that, we have to also worry about the westbound traffic that turns north and ensuring that there's enough turning movements and turning room for those trucks that get on there. We will explore that, and, uh, we'll also continue to work with, um, with, uh, Mr. Rogers and then the force committee on that.
While, while you're on that, Kyle...
Yes.
I, I think that's, if you, if you go up and take a look at the approach off of the main, um, nurses', um, access, where we used to have the loop drive that they took out, they've, they've done that a lot by, by painting. As you come down, the painting forces you to come back to ninety on the road surface shoulder itself. And although those that don't want to follow the stripes will not follow them, but it would, it would turn a good portion of the vehicles square to the lane, and that probably would be a fairly low, low-cost opportunity. And I, I do understand what you're saying, is it would, it would then put you, um, west of the intersection, and, and we might find that it's harder to look back over your other shoulder. So, um, I don't know how the, how the council feels, but I, maybe we ought to, um, we ought to have, if, if not now, we ought to have a conversation of do we want those, those speed limits dropped, and, and can we, uh, can we propose to have those speed limits dropped? As town grows, eventually, you know, those speed limits will drop and, and get to the interior of, of town. And so, um, I think those are all good suggestions. You would, if, um, traffic would slow down from the cemetery into town, um, would make a big difference also. So I, I think we ought to, we ought to have those conversations and, and see what we can do to address those. I realize it's not our highway, and, um, and yet people don't like that answer. And, um, we could write a letter to YDOT at least and say that the city of Riverton would be in support of reducing speed limits, and, um, they'll, they'll come back with a, well, we gotta do a two-year traffic study or something, but we might as well start the ball rolling. Has anybody got feelings on that?
Your Honor, you know, I didn't, I don't remember voting for YDOT. Do you remember voting for YDOT? I don't know that they're an elected official. I don't know that they have the power that they have, but they do. You know, uh, what we, you know, they give us the finger on a, on a stop sign or something like that, and, uh, come Tuesday of next week, we're gonna find out that we don't like that. And, uh, unelected officials that ignore what we're doing need to be apprehended and say, hey, you serve us, we don't serve you. So I think if we got as a council, that might help us.
So it's easy to, it's easy to say that. Now, there'll be people that don't like a reduction in speed. That's a long ways with very few stops. Not everybody's turning to CWC, so they want to get out of town, and, and I, I understand, and I hear the criticism that, that the PD isn't patrolling that hard enough, and, and people are doing seventy miles an hour. They're doing seventy miles an hour. Those people that are breaking the law choose to break the law. They're gonna do it where they want to do it, but my suggestion would be that we direct, we direct Kyle to formulate a, a letter the, to YDOT that the city council is in support of dropping the speed limit in those areas. And, uh, maybe we need to, maybe we need to get more input from the public, you know, and, and maybe you want to call around and ask. It makes sense to me that, um, that that speed could be reduced from, uh, the Maverick past the, the cemetery to thirty-five miles an hour. And, um, and then we take the forty-five mile an hour reduction and take it clear out to the base of the Griffey Hill coming down the main highway so that there's a distance there that you have to start to reduce speed, not all at once, and so...
Your Honor, for the last three or four meetings, we've had citizens complain about speeding in Riverton in so many areas that we may need to, as a council or as a staff and city, we may need to make that a priority and where people, like I said, you drive through different places in the state, and you know you're gonna get a ticket if you're not going by the, I mean,
Yeah.
Maybe they have to say, hey, I better slow down or it's gonna cost me. I mean, it comes to the, when people are complaining over and over again, maybe we need to address that issue.
You go through Bridger, Montana, you go through thirty miles an hour, you're gonna get a ticket. Bridger is not any bigger, is smaller than Riverton, but it's twenty-five miles an hour, and twenty-five means twenty-five.
And so the other complaint that we're picking up a lot of static on is River View coming in from, from, uh, the rural areas, and I would propose that no one's gonna like it, but I would, I got an earful from a bus driver this last week, and, and I would propose that we look at a four-way stop on Major's and Adams River View. Um, that, her contention was if you get stuck there in the wrong time, the, the traffic will not yield on River View, and so it just keeps stacking back up the hill. And, um, about the only way to do that without a stop sign or a stop light would be to, um, create a, a four-way stop. We do, and just this last week, we received a grant to, uh, run sidewalks, um, to through that intersection down to the school, and it's, uh, seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Your Honor, the, the award is seven hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Seven hundred and twenty-three. So I don't know that that would fix that intersection. Is that intersection improvement at all in that, in those dollars, or is that all on just sidewalk?
Your Honor, those funds would not, um, allow for a full
Reconstruct.
Improvement of that intersection.
So, so we're gonna put a sidewalk in so more kids can walk up to Ma- to Major and Adams?
In way.
And, and
Not get across.
Then you get some kids and a bunch of cars waiting to get across.
So I, I think one thing leads to the next, and, and, um, it's, it's something that we really ought to concern ourselves with. If you, if you stopped, the, the first full-fledged stop on, um, Adams coming into town is, um, Broadway. And so that's a long ways, and, um, maybe we ought to look really hard at putting a four-way stop there. The other one that we're taking a lot of pressure to do something with is the, the Spire and Monroe intersection. There's not another stop sign until you hit Federal on that. And so, uh, you can do all the studying you want on it, and we don't, and I talked to Captain during our, our break, and, um, we only have two officers on at a time in the, in the city of Riverton. We have lots of officers, but we have lots of shifts. And so I don't think it's fair, uh, from Tom's last two weeks ago complaint, I've seen five cars pulled over and officers, I don't know if tickets were passed out or, or what, but there were five stops that I saw. And, um, the, the traffic trailer does do its job. I do see lots of people slow down in front of it. Uh, it's a, it's a good location for where it's been placed, and that was all done by the police department, and Brian went out there and got the weeds cut, and, and, uh, I appreciate what you've done, and, and I, I don't know... But I, I think we, like Christie says, we probably ought to, um, step out and, and say, let's, let's look hard at some four-way stops, and people may hate them. The other thing that's been mentioned is the speed bumps, and man, do we hate speed bumps. But, um, maybe we need to look at some speed bumps. We've started talking about speed bumps in all nation, and, um, that's an easy answer for that because that's a specific location. You start putting speed bumps in, uh, the middle of Monroe, and you're gonna launch some cars.
She wants them all the way up Sunset. You see those high school kids?
Kyle, you're the, you're the, our best traffic individual. How do you feel about speed bumps?
Your Honor, I think there's value in speed bumps, but you need to be careful at where they're placed and how they're placed and how frequent they are. Um, speed bumps or humps is just one traffic calming measure. You can also look at tabletops. You can look at channeling devices, and to explain, I think we all understand what speed humps are, but a tabletop is more of a raised area that has, um, like it sounds, a tabletop. Those work really well at, at, uh, four-way stops or at pedestrian crossings because it allows the pedestrian to sit higher than, uh, what you normally would be. The channeling device is, is, um, basically a way to put in some concrete medians or concrete islands, and it forces traffic to slow down as it works through the channeling. So there are a lot of speed control mechanisms. Um, I've seen them be very successful when done right. I've seen them also create more issues when they're done poorly. And so as a council, I just caution you on that, and we get all the information we can before we implement something like that.
Your Honor, that's true, but we don't do it that way. We say speed bumps, and then we say to the engineer, put them where they're most effective, so we don't get the blame, you get it.
Sounds great, Your Honor.
Point taken.
Your Honor, a- and as much as I hate to say we ought to enforce speed limits more, I think that's probably one of the only things we do have that we can do. And so, you know, none of us speed through Shishone anymore, right?
Never.
Okay, and if, if Riverton had the same reputation, we would slow traffic down, which would solve some of these problems. But I still think, and, and I think the force committee and the city, and, and we've discussed this Hill Street issue, for example, for many years, before we rebuilt Hill Street, we went to YDOT and said, does this qualify for a street light? Because we all intuitively just knew that it needed one anyway, which I still think's the best, you know, a realignment and a street light is what we need to have. The, the trick is getting the bureaucracy of YDOT to agree with us, you know, and we need to push them to... I, I think we can put pressure on them to study it further, and maybe our resident traffic expert can help us with the criteria that needs to be met for that to happen with what we want to have happen. You know, and, uh, you know, maybe we pick the right weekend and have a rally in CWC parking lot and have a three hundred cars go in and out of there so that we make sure we meet the spec that they're looking for. I mean, should I say that on a public mic?
Of course you can.
You know?
Great idea.
They're not afraid to rig the game in their favor, so I don't see why we can't rig the game in our favor, so...
Well, I, I think, um, I don't know that we can increase, um, traffic stops from, from here, but we certainly can ask that of the police department, that they would, would pay more attention and pass out more citations. And that, warnings don't do it, and citations do.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Well, I'm wondering, on Main Street, why couldn't we get MBHP to patrol that a little more, too? It's a highway.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe they would help us out a little bit there.
Any feeling on that, Captain?
Your Honor?
Does YDOT, do they work inside town?
They can. Their issues kind of match ours, short staff, two troopers on in the area at a time, and they cover South Pass, the Du Bois, towards their mop, so they're, they're pretty limited on where they can actually stay and hang out. That's part of the, the issue with traffic enforcement, is you've got to actually sit in that area for a certain period of time to actually get anything accomplished.
So I know that YDOT, their highway division side is fifty officers down. We think we're, we, you know, in the conversation, we're better funded than almost anybody in the state. We're two officers down. There are fifty officers back, and so, um...
There's quite more important things like that going on. There's probably more important things like that going on, but people are...
So, maybe you could, Captain, maybe you could bring back to us an idea of how we could increase traffic, uh, arrests or traffic citations inside the city that doesn't put too much impact on, on what you're doing and try, trying to look, stop that, that flow in those areas, uh, channeling between up in front of the college and, and down on, um, River View coming into town.
Definitely.
The other problem is the one right at, um, Spire and, and Monroe. And maybe there's, Kyle and I, and we've all been looking at, uh, they do make a lighted stop sign, it has lights built into it on a solar controller, and they range somewhere between seventeen hundred and, uh, down to seven hundred per sign. And so, um, but we have lots and lots of four-way stops, and so, how do we just pick and choose which ones get lit?
No, but if we have some that are really problem children, maybe that's where we start, I mean.
Well, that one at Shoshone sure works.
And I, I think we're just gonna have to pour some resources at it. Uh, Kyle brought me the budget. It's twenty thousand dollars is all we have in signed budget.
Yes, Your Honor, and, um, we've spent the majority of that budget already because that was, um, a budget that's helping us replace the street name signs. So, currently, we do not have a budget in our street sign budget to purchase those flashing stopwalk sign, crosswalk signs or stop signs. Um, we would have to find those funds and reallocate them if that's something the council would like to explore.
Take it out of the mayor's slush fund.
Yeah, the mayor's got a real slush fund. I, I bought hams is what I got. I don't know what the rest of you guys got. I, I think that's something that maybe we should, uh, schedule a work session or something and, and talk specifically of those locations and what we would ask to be done.
Yep.
Your Honor, this is just a work session to cover any of the traffic conflicts that we have.
Mm-hmm. And, and they're not, you know, those are the ones that rear their head, but I think the very moment that we start shutting down traffic on one section of town, there's gonna be somebody that wants another section of town covered, so it's just, it's just gonna be difficult, so.
Your Honor, we'd, we'd be happy to do that.
I interrupted you because I didn't want to get off of that college intersection. I, that is, that is such a pass-the-buck thing, and it has been for a lot of years. We don't own that road, we don't have control of that road, we're behind on every side of that, and it isn't, though, there are elected officials that are in charge of that. Uh, the governor's office is in charge of that, and, and we, we need to go right to Governor Gordon and say, "This is a dangerous situation in Riverton," and, and we don't get much, um, cooperation from.
YDOT.
From your YDOT system. There isn't, there probably isn't a better administrator in the, in the entire system than General Ryder. He is very bright and, and listens when people speak, but they have their limitations too. Um, if there's, if their traffic study says that a light won't work, then they have a hard time going past their own, their own traffic studies. Uh, we're all pretty, I, I think we would've been better to put a light there than a light at College View.
Mm-hmm.
Um, College View is a, a direct T-bone intersection.
Mm-mm.
And, um, on- only one side traffic, and so, uh, we have four-side traffic at Hill Street, and so.
Well, College View is the result because you don't have one at Hill Street.
Hill Street, yeah.
That's, that's the only thing that slows people down as it is.
I agree. Kyle, back to you. I'll give you back your time.
That's okay. Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Council, for the discussion. Um, we are happy Mr. Rogers is bringing this up, and we've enjoyed working with him through the Force Committee, and even his proposal to look at this inexpensive option, we will look at it, and if it works and doesn't create another safety issue, we'll explore it. Um, and that's just what I, I wanted to report. The other thing I would say is, we've had a lot of success, um, with our district representatives from YDOT. The fact that they're willing to come to our force meeting to talk specifically about this issue, I think speaks to the, the interest they have, and so, they will be in attendance at our upcoming force meeting, um, and, uh, they are gonna specifically address this intersection, um, their warrants or their study that they did for it. And so, I think we're getting pretty good response from them, and then even at the college, I was very impressed with Mr. Tyndall. Um, the, the thing that we're not talking about, Your Honor, is the expense for the realignment. And that's why we're, we started with the Force Committee, because that's where some of the money is to potentially do that. And, um, with the bipartisan infrastructure law, staff is paying attention for opportunities for, of funding announcements that may apply directly to this intersection, and Mr. Tyndall said that he'd be very willing to partner with us on the grant opportunities. So I see a lot of positive momentum on this, um, and we appreciate that, I think, the community's support, and even YDOT, I mean, they, they have been very responsive and helpful and willing to work with us, so I did wanna say that. Um, I have just two other things, and it's good news. We've kind of already mentioned it, but, and, and it was in your weekly report, but I think it's worth stating publicly that we're, uh, very fortunate to receive our, um, ARPA grant. Um, as it's been mentioned before, um, the legislature allocated fifty million dollars to water and sewer projects. Um, the legislature received, my computer's died, so I'm gonna have to do this from memory. They received a hundred and thirteen applications for fifty million dollars, and it was to the tune of approximately two hundred and thirty million. So the Office of State Land Investment had to filter through all those applications, and our application was one that rose to the top, it ranked well. We were able to attend that meeting and receive our full request for that water and sewer project, and again, that was two-point-nine million. As Ms. Harris referenced, we will have to match that grant from our Water and Sewer Fund to the tune of five-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. Um, the total project will be a little over three-point-five million. But we feel fortunate, and I wanna, um, give credit where credit is due to our staff that helped apply for that grant, and again, when there's a hundred and thirteen, nearly five times amount the request, we're pretty fortunate to receive what we did and to get our full request. And the other thing is, is the TAP grant award that was referenced by the mayor. Um, this was another funding opportunity that received, um, um, very significant asks, and we received our full request for an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar project. It does provide sidewalks around the Willow Creek School, um, where there, where none do, where none exist. Um, we did include some pedestrian provisions at the intersection that was referenced, um, but there is not enough money to reconfigure that entire intersection, but at least to improve crossing options, put crosswalks there, we even discussed flashing crosswalks. So the addition of the sidewalks and then, um, some improvements at that intersection will be helpful. And again, credit to our staff for applying for that because we were one of the few that received that grant, and we received our full amount. So, that's good news, and things are happening that are positive in our community, and we're happy to be part of that.
Kyle, you and I spoke of the, the rolling bumps at, at Eighth Street and Sunset. Were you able to get any contraction on what we could do there?
Uh, Mr. Eggleston and I spoke about that today, and we're gonna try and get some hot mix in and smooth that out.
Okay, thank you. Is that, did I interrupt you enough times in your...
Your Honor, I, I'm done. I, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Kyle, can you give me the, the correct pronunciation of the new company that bought the old-style homes building?
I believe it's Laube, it's spelled L-A-U-B-E, but pronounced lobby.
Laube. We were, we had kind of an interesting, uh, thing. Kyle and I were headed out to, um, the Shoshone Tribal Council, and we got a call from a reporter. And this was two weeks ago. Kyle was familiar with, with this conversation, and, um, they have purchased this old-style homes building, if you know what that, where that is and what it is, it's a rather large building. And they're gonna, they're gonna move their company out of California to Riverton, Wyoming. So Kyle and I got on the phone and spoke with the owner, really nice guy, and, uh, he, it's a family operation, and, uh, I believe, uh, one of the four major manufacturers of dog clippers and shampoo.
Animal, animal, animal. Not dog, animal.
Animal clippers, and so, um, that was kind of a fun conversation, and, and, and when we got involved, we'd already had that, knew that that building was under, under contract with, with the sale of the style homes building, but we're glad to have that happen, and it's right down by our, our, um, rails to trails.
Yep.
So, um, and then the, I got a, a call from the ladies that, in the secretary's office at the fairground, and I went down and spoke to them about a, a police call that they thought didn't get responded to. When we researched that, the police were there in three minutes and stayed for twenty minutes on site, and so, um, we appreciate what the police officers do. They, they don't get enough credit for what they do do, but we will, we will modify that action and, and, um, go in and, and make contact with fairgrounds from now on. Uh, Kyle and I and Kevin Kursnichtek had the opportunity to have a meeting with Kafaru, and it was, uh, a real important meeting. They, they have some really big ideas, and what they were hoping that we could do is that the city would sponsor some of their, the things that they wanted to do, like cater events and those kind of things, and we were able to point out that that really wasn't what the city could do, yet we, we wanted to be as helpful as we could there, and we were encouraging anything that we could help them do that was within our ability, we would do that for them. Um, this last, last week, um, Mr. Dan Starks and his wife received the Wyoming Economic Development Award from the state, and I went up, and that was presented at his location at the museum, and then, um, the mayors of, uh, Fremont County and, and Commissioner, uh, Jones signed a proclamation. Um, when we got to looking at it, we wanted to, to give him some kind of thanks for all the work that he's done, and, uh, in his conversations with us, he has spent over a hundred and fifty million dollars in Fremont County since, um, two thousand and fifteen. And, um, that's impressive, and so, um, we got to spend the, the whole afternoon with him and his wife, and we took him to dinner, and, and when we, you know, what do you give a guy that has everything? So, um, we did, we did give him a proclamation from the, the mayors, and it was signed by all of the mayors and the, and, uh, Mike Jones, and, and he was real appreciative for that. Um, the next day, I was able to get a tour of the new Equine Center, and it's a long ways from done, but it is a big, good-looking building, isn't it, Mike?
Absolutely. We were just out there again today.
Yeah, that's, that's a real, that's a real building, and how fortunate we are to have that in Riverton, Wyoming, eighteen-million-dollar building, and I, I think it's probably, would it be the largest building in town? I mean, my guess it is, but...
When it, when it's all said and done, it, it'll, it'd be really close to the largest, um, by square footage, I think Walmart probably has it, um, probably has it by some freezer space, but it'd be fairly close.
But if we throw in all that, um, all their fencing and corrals and...
Absolutely, yeah. If you, you calculate in the whole compound, it's a, it's a, it's a rather vast operation, absolutely.
And, and you know, talking with, uh, Dr. Tyndall, he is a really smart guy about pro- common sense, and what he, what he's trying to point out is that Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming is an agricultural center, and we need to, we need to go to where our strong points are. And, and they're really trying to look and see what, what they can do for the community to make that work, and, uh, outstanding, uh, landscaping on that, everything about it is, is impressive. Um, I had the opportunity to, to talk with, uh, Mike Miller about an abandoned house in town, and we're making a, a list of houses that are abandoned in town, and we're gonna try to see what we can do to actually make things happen on those, those lots, and, um, and get somebody involved with the cleanup of those, or, or have some cleanup done by others. Um, of course, Kyle and I, uh, get to do, um, meetings every Monday afternoon. I appreciate what Kyle does there and keeps me up and informed. There also was a DWI meeting, which, uh, you know, those are, those are interesting meetings, and I think we're, we're moving forward there. We, we at least have a lower fatality rate than we had in the previous year. And so I think the acquisition of more resources into Fremont County has been helpful. We did have, Kristen and Kyle attended with me, the liquor, um, uh, holders came in and we spoke about, uh, shared rides. Um, WRTA got a, a twenty-eight-thousand-dollar grant for, uh, safe rides, and, uh, we're trying to see how that could work into those bar owners, uh, and see if we could help them supplement those costs to get those, those people home. And, and as we talk about that, that probably isn't where our DWIs are coming from. That, that probably isn't the crowd that we're, that we're getting DWIs, so, um, but they're more than willing to, and, and some of the bar owners are spending as much as six hundred dollars a month to get their, uh, patrons home, so, um, there was a RCDA meeting this last week, and, and that was good economic information that we got from that meeting. Um, there was a staff meeting, I appreciate the senior staff, they all come and do their job and, and have their information ready. After that meeting, we spoke with, uh, our municipal judge and our city attorney, um, and that was a, that was a good conversation also. We don't probably do enough of those. We did find a public, um, defender in the process, and that, that worked out really well for us, and I think, uh, Janet will do a really good job for us. Come to find out that her, her mom and my mom worked out at Lucky Mac, and so that we, we had some connection there, so she's a resident, that's a lifelong resident of Riverton. Um, Carl Falcon came in, uh, also, and he wants to work on that National Night Out. He says that that will reduce crime in the city of Riverton by six to sixteen percent. And, and it falls right on top of our fair every, it's August first Tuesday in, in August. And, um, he wants to, um, make that kind of a big deal. He thinks he can get a helicopter to land from the, from the, uh, air ambulance and a few things like that, and so, I made the suggestion that, that maybe we would, ninety days in front of that, we would start trying to help him raise some funds. He, he wants to pass some things out to people that come in attendance, and, um, and have a patrol, uh, s- some officers there and a patrol car and an ambulance, and some things that would inspire, uh, young people to maybe wanting to get into the, the services of those individuals. Um, the fifty-six permit is over and done, and we finished, we ended that on October thirtieth. We took twenty-three deer, and I think five of those ta- tested positive for wasting disease. Um, I noticed in my neighborhood that the, the count is way down, and I really appreciate Shannon for her hard efforts there, and we ought to do something special for her, I don't know what, maybe get some deer horns for the front of her truck or something. That's, that has grown, that's almost twice as many as we got last year, so I think we've got a lot of help from, from other hunters, and, um, that's appreciative, that, that's making a difference. Um, Greg Talibus, thought he had the ability to gather up a whole bunch of people today, and he ended up all by himself painting out the graffiti that he found, but he painted all the way up the north side of Main Street Alley to the, uh, Tomahawk Motel. He'll get that tomorrow and then start back down the, the south side, and I drove through it, and it looks really great, and he's done a good job of, of that. And, um, if anybody wants to help him tomorrow, that would be, he would, he'd be tickled to have... And if anybody wants to help him tomorrow, that would be, he would, he'd be tickled to have the help. The, the other thing I wanted to point out about that is he called Martin Lumber and, and they were kind enough to donate all the painting supplies to him, so. With that said, does anybody else have anything else they want to add? If we don't have anything else, we don't have an executive session, right? So we'll stand adjourned, adjourned if there isn't any other concerns. We'll stand adjourned at nine twenty-five.